All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Chair Berkeley is absent today, so I'm taking his place, Kathy Nyberg. And if you'd like to, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we're on Agenda number three. Item number three, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Hold on.
Support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carried unanimously. Number four, motion to approve the consent agenda, can I get a motion, please?
Hold on. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Number five, public comment.
And I see none, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're obviously not. I have been checking.
All right, no public comment today. Personnel, Mr. Aldrich.
Yes.
I'll let you take over.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item A is a motion to approve the hiring of Ellis Wojcowski as a junior high eighth grade football coach effective August 22, 2023.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you. Item B is a motion to approve the hiring of Rose Walburn to job number 60, pupil support assistant, 30 hours per week, high school, effective September 18, 2023.
Hold on. Order.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Item C is a motion to approve the hiring of Jamie Waters as an office assistant slash enrollment specialist, district-wide confidential unit, effective October 2, 2023.
So, support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Item D is a motion to accept the resignation from Kevin Hagan as an assistant boys wrestling coach effective August 25, 2023.
Support. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item E is a motion to accept the resignation from Craig Platt as a varsity boys wrestling coach effective September 11, 2023.
So, moved by Chair or Director McLaughlin, supported by Director Egan. Any discussion? I'll let, oh, go ahead.
What is the status of our wrestling program?
These positions are posted and looking for candidates. We haven't filled positions since April.
Mr. Pierce is coming back then?
Mr. Pierce had resigned. He did resign, so we posted his position. And these would be his assistants, those were handpicked by Mr. Pierce and I believe they're choosing to resign also.
So we have like three positions open, or at least?
Yeah, well, the head I know is was posted and is still open and these positions, if they haven't already been posted, will be posted tomorrow after this meeting.
Oh, right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Number seven on the agenda is administrative reports. A is directors, and we don't have a student director today. Anything from the directors?
I'll just need a comment, you know.
Chair, Director.
Yeah, this weekend, I just feel as though, you know what, Coach Konda and the girls tennis team always does a really nice job and we often don't hear about them. But I stopped down at their invite this weekend and it's hard because it's partially in Virginia and partially in Hibbing, but they did a really nice job, it was a great day, well-intended, and I think kudos to the girls tennis team.
Also, kudos to the cross-country girls.
Yeah.
Who I believe just got first in some cross-country, maybe Grand Rapids. I don't remember where.
I just add too, if I could, the girls tennis team, Mr. Konda and a former board member as a parent, I passed them after our last board meeting, picking up garbage by Hip-Tech. Entire team, parents, coaches, and a former school board member that's a parent was also up there picking up garbage.
Oh, all thank you.
In the rain, in the rain, if you remember that, I was starting to sprinkle that day and it was in the rain, so.
Oh, Mitch, yes.
Thank you, thank you for that, that was awesome.
And that was the tennis team, huh?
It is, yes.
For the garbage, yeah, that's nice. And I think they get a donation from Hip-Tech. But still, they gotta do the work.
Absolutely.
Awesome, anything else from the directors? Okay. B is administrators and staff. Mr. Lettska?
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the board and Sir Ted Aldrich. I just first wanted to thank all of our special ed teachers and PSA staff for being the ground running this year. We had to react to a lot of new enrollments and students' transition from one program to another. Everyone had pitched in when needed and was greatly appreciated. It continues to be a privilege to serve in this position and I look forward to another successful year. To build on our success, I've been in contact with the URS of Minnesota in regards to their education department conducting an audit of our multi-tiered system of supports at our special education program. The Center of Applied Research and Improvement, which is the acronym CARRY, is finishing an audit with the Oseo Public Schools District and we anticipate finally as a course of action with them in November. CARRY is a research center at the U of M that serves as a link between research and practice in Minnesota schools, pre-K through grade 16, and other agencies interested in applied education research. There are experts in research evaluation, literacy, and assessment. And also, our school district is a member and so they provide us with professional development learning opportunities that's specific to our goals of the district. And it's kind of a partnership between myself and our curriculum director, Karen McDonald.
So we pay a fee to be a member of?
Yeah, there's a fee based on your.
And then we get the training for all our special ed staff?
Well, they have like, they call them general assemblies and so they have, you can join in person or virtually in certain topics. The head of the center is a former colleague of mine, Dr. Kim Gibbons. She's nationally recognized for MTSS systems and set up a very successful one in the St. Croix Co-op, which is like Rush City area. So we're looking forward to do that. But the audit is kind of a separate thing that they've done. They did one in Anoka a few years ago and I got to read that report. And it's very similar, like a strategic plan that we've done here as a district. It's just specific to one interventions we're doing, what things we can tweak, what we can improve. And then also with our special education department, where we could maybe reduce costs or revamp things or make it better, so.
Do you pay a fee for the audit?
The audit is a separate fee than the membership. Yeah. And that would be paid through our federal allocation dollars that we get per year from the federal government.
Oh, okay.
I just add to what Mr. Lettska is saying. So as I'm sure you've noticed, we've hired many PSAs over the summer. And that's for a lot of different reasons, but our sped numbers, students that have an IEP are growing. And Nathan, Mr. Lettska shared with me the other day that we're approximately in student population, we're approximately at 23%.
Close to 25.
So almost one in four students.
Yes, are identified as having some type of need.
Need, yes. And that's high.
With PSAs, you mean? No?
Not all of them, no, that's just our, that's the percentage of kids that receives special education services, yeah.
Okay, not necessarily a PSA.
So that's why, how does that relate to other districts in the area? It seems awful high.
Yeah, if you, I mean, if you do a quick like Minnesota report card and search across, in our central mid-range area, they're pretty similar. Grand Rapids and Hibbing are about the same. Rock Ridge is a little bit lower. And that could do partially because they have a alternative school that's separate from their school district. So kids that are getting altered programming or specialized program like the Level Four in the, at the Northland Learning Center, those are separate schools, so those don't count. That could be part of it. But you know, the state recommends that schools are within 12 to 50%, so we're very much higher than that.
What's the separate school by Virginia?
The Northland Learning Center.
Okay.
Yeah. So students, so districts.
What grades is that?
That's pre-K through 12.
Okay.
Yeah. But that's a separate school district, so kids that we have sent there or other districts send there don't count against their child counts, a separate count.
So we're not a member of?
No.
The Northland Special? Northland Special Ed Co-op. And we're a self-contained special ed co-op here in Hibbing, but we did some of our Level Four students, our highest need special education students, we have bought eight seats, correct? We bought eight seats from the Northland. And that's a cost savings for us to have those students attend there and not have to hire the staff to support it here. And overall, our sped costs are growing. And that's really the conversation that Mr. Lettska and I had is we just want somebody to just, a clean overview of our program and let us know where we could improve and maybe where we could streamline also.
So, do you think our higher number, the 25%, could some of that be that we have different resources than some of the neighboring smaller school districts? So some of the students with IEPs and their families feel as though they're getting different supports and that's why they're rolling there?
I think that's fair. I mean, I haven't taken a survey of parents, but I mean, there are kids that come here because of the quality of teaching, not only the special ed, but general ed too. So we do have a good reputation for services and that. You know, a lot of kids too, there's lots of options elective-wise and things for kids.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but with the enrollment reports that came out, I think we were maybe 50 students above last year and I guess, I don't believe it's because our population is increasing in demographics, so I just feel as though those students are coming from somewhere.
Yeah, coming back or people move into the area. What this all circles back to, originally I was just gonna do the special education audit to look at ways maybe we can curb costs or revamp some of the things that we think are working well, but maybe we can do it better. But it all comes back to the MTSS system, like Kim said. If you don't have interventions prior to a special referral or testing or even qualifying, that's where you can kind of hone in on doing things. Because our highest, the number of kids that we service highest of are kids with learning disabilities. So that's where you can look at different, like we have interventions in place, how do we keep those? How do we provide those supports for those kids that may need that? So that's kind of looking at how we keep that and what we can do to revamp some of the things we're doing. So we're working, I mean, there's lots of things we're doing that are working, but I just think it's time to really kind of dive in and take a little deeper look at things.
So could we use this at all? I mean, I know at several of our school board meetings we talk about, okay, once all the stimulus money expires, then some of these supports that we've been able to put in place, it's going to be challenging for us to figure out how to finance them. Could we use this, is there other funding available? You know, given our high sped population, that we could maybe apply to receive to try to keep some of those interventions in place?
Not sure about that. I mean, is there, do I know of a pot of money that you're speaking of?
No. If there were, we would have tapped into that. You know, there's, for intervention programs, we do get funding for it, it's Title I. There used to be Title II that would offset class sizes, that's changed. So there's been a lot of pots may moved around for different things. In the end, what's happening is that the state put a Band-Aid on what they call the cross-subsidate. And that's basically what we take out of the general fund to cover special ed. They're gonna pay up to 44% next year and I think it's gonna go up to like 55, 57% in year two. So that's still half. So what we're running into is any addition we make in special ed, we're not getting reimbursed for that. So as we get less enrollment and we have to make cuts, it's, so any, you know, any aid we add isn't getting reimbursed, so that's a cut somewhere else. And then it gets kind of complicated because of what they call means of effort. So you have to maintain your program that you had from the previous year. So, but any cuts you make, it hurts our most needy kids. So it doesn't, it's not like, oh, good, we're not cutting for special ed. You cut from a gen ed class or a teacher, that's a higher class size, that's more to deal with, and it just trickles down. So this is just gives us an opportunity to get, you know, some, get the experts in our state that basically create this think tank to help legislators set legislation for reading interventions and things, and they give us suggestions. But there may be grant opportunities out there, you know. I mean, in the end, it's almost, I was, this is an ongoing conversation with regions. It's like, like my colleague and I asked, they have a grant writer, so she meets with them and they just kind of plug away at what's options. And that's, you know, that would be something that, maybe it's something we join with Chisholm on or something, who knows? But there is money out there, but the only thing about that, it's not, it's a short solution. Three years, it's done. Two years, it's done. Five years, it's done. So, but they might give us suggestions. I mean, and I'm just, I'm just talking right now, this is a thing, a plan, but you know, a lot of districts have taken, okay, we have to make a reduction in a certain area, why can't we purpose a veteran teacher to maybe work on interventions with students? Because the thing that I always see is like, some of our best teachers should be those people as opposed to hiring somebody new and training them to do it. Not that they couldn't, but if we're trying to make an immediate compact, immediate impact, some of our veteran teachers would be really good.
So Nathan, just so I'm clear.
Yeah.
You're saying we're about the same 1% special ed as Rapids? But Rock Ridge is a little less.
Yes.
And you're thinking it's because Northland is located right over there?
Well, that's my.
Is that, is that what you meant?
That's what I meant, but that's my opinion without.
But it's closer.
Crunchy numbers.
Right. Okay, I thought that's what you meant, that they, or the school would be more apt to send kids to Northland because they're right there?
No, it's just that the kids that they send there, yeah, it could be that, could be proximity. You know, do I think they send an extensive amount of kids versus other people in their co-op? Not necessarily, you know.
So then what is the?
I'm just guessing, I don't know.
You're just guessing, okay.
I don't know. Well, I think, you know. Based on numbers, I'm just saying, I don't necessarily know. That's what I've seen in the past, but.
Mr. Letts, and we have looked, I mean, the trend for sped numbers is on the rise across the state.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you said 12 to 15%. That would not be the norm for our area from what we looked at.
No, exactly.
Maybe that's Western Minnesota, or maybe that's averaging in. But our area, I mean.
Well, there's practice and there's what's, I mean, the reality is that like early childhood, for example, we talked about this last year. Minneapolis gets like 60 referrals for special ed a day for birth to three years, birth to five years old. 60 a day. They can't keep up, they can't, they don't have staff. So I mean, that's, that in itself is very telling on what direction things are going, you know, so.
What are, for our special ed teachers, what are their class sizes like right now? I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, we see a lot of PSAs that we're hiring and, but what about the actual special education teachers? Are their classrooms maybe a little over full? Are we gonna be needing more special ed teachers in the future?
Well, yeah, I mean, if you're looking at just sheer caseloads right now, we probably could add more teachers.
Because I mean, I would imagine if we're high at that 25%, their caseloads, I'm imagining, must be pretty full and that must be a lot of work.
Yeah, so you know, like the elementary, it's not necessarily that their classes are full. It's the amount of kids that have high needs and also too, the amount of kids they have to see. They may not see all the kids at one time in their groups, but it could be a pairs in a classroom at the kindergarten and they're working with four other kids supporting the kindergarten teacher. It's just, there's just a lot of needs district-wide. But yeah, we also have to be conscious of our finances too, you know, so it's a balance to try to figure that out. But you know, that kind of say, I can't, I can't have my cake and eat it too, I can't say I need all these pairs and teachers. So, and sometimes honestly, I can't, it's, it's very eye-opening how much in a day I'll get a request for like another aid or we need a teacher. I mean, it's weekly.
Well, I thought there was more kind of regulations around special ed for, you know, teachers versus how many students they have and PSAs and how that number, all that formula works.
Yeah, there's, I mean, yeah, there's, there is specific things in legislation that are specific to certain programs. The one that's very easy to see is like early childhood special ed. That's very much laid out in legislation. Other than that, it's fairly open to what districts feel they're comfortable with. You know, in my opinion, it used to be 10 to 15 kids per teacher at the elementary, 15 to 18, when you get a little bit older than high school, it's 18 to 20. That's kind of evolved where it's like across the board, you ideally want to be 18 to 20. But that also too, you have to play into, somebody might have 20, somebody might have 15. That 15 might be a lot tougher because there's three kids that are a lot more, that have needs higher than the other kids.
So what's the most that one Mars would have, that's over 20?
I would say right now at the high school, we have teachers that have like 20, 24, 24. Yeah. So it's not where I want it to be, but it's hovering on what we would need to hire. The other trick is, is that hiring special ed teachers is a, I recruit people. So I know we're on camera, but I mean, I call around and I talk to people and, you know, they want to come to Hibbing. So it's, you know, a lot of our, the way we get people is we have a really good contract and teachers are really, that's an appeal. As you know, it's more than that to a job these days, obviously, but, but yeah, so.
So Nathan, in special ed, our teachers, our special ed teachers, do they have the same group of special ed kids all day, every day in their class? They come and go, right?
Yes.
Okay. Some with PSAs, some without PSAs.
That's right.
Okay. Is there any way that the kids could spend more time with the special ed teacher? And then we wouldn't have to hire so many PSAs? Or?
Well.
I have such a vague understanding of how it really works.
We could spend a whole retreat on this.
Yeah, and I don't want to do that.
I would just tell you.
And my people will not like it.
Our principals, and I'm saying from pre-K on, principals, teachers, everybody's really pulling together. And I think everybody's really conscious of the fact that it is a little bit, we're getting nervous when we keep adding people when we have declining enrollment.
Oh, yes.
We do have these glimmers of, oh, we have 50 more kids, but do we have 50 kids compared to like two years ago? I mean, our trend is going the other way. So, but to answer your question about like a kindergarten class, most of our elementaries, pairs are going into the rooms so these kids get inclusive experiences with their peers because kids learn from their peers better than being separated. And so.
So we are mainstreaming?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Or mainstreaming the special ed?
As you get older, some kids need more specialized instruction in core areas. And that's where you talk about kids being pulled for.
Post for math or?
Based on their level of need.
Okay.
And so, yeah, it's very much a mix of that.
Yeah.
So schedules are set, but they do change depending on new enrollments or kids may be proving that they don't need the level of support they had at the beginning of the year. So it's always this shell, you know, things are moving around all the time.
Fluctuate, yeah.
Yeah, but.
So, I have a question, and again, just trying to understand it better. But if we have roughly 25% of our school population that has IEPs.
Yep.
So somewhere around what, 500-ish?
Yep.
How many PSAs do we have?
Around 80, I believe.
It's like, well, it's like, well, I'll answer it this way. If the ELC has 10 PSAs that would support our early childhood program, that is a new number. So if you look at from the start of COVID to now, our number of pairs hasn't changed. It's teetered around 60, 62, depending on district-wide. So anytime you say we have 75 now, well, we added a whole new school, basically. So, so yeah, that's why it's up, but it's, yeah.
Do we have a new philosophy now that we do approve of PSAs at the early childhood level? Because we, I thought last year we were saying that we hesitated putting a lot of PSAs down in early childhood.
Well, we used, we hired pupil support assistants to meet the requirement of what the needs are in the classroom. So the reason we have 10 now is because we added another classroom for more time at the three-year level. We added two aids to that instead of like 14 hours.
So we don't have the philosophy that PSAs, we should hesitate putting them in early childhood?
Well, I think the philosophy is this, there are, there, as, when the kids are younger, our philosophy as a district is we try to avoid one-to-one aids specifically. And the reason for that is that we feel like we have, like this year, for example, we have Mandy there, Husko, the principal. We have Lisa Smith, who is the early childhood sped teacher for that building, in addition to being the behavior specials intervention part-time. So though, Mandy, Lisa work together with those teams to come up with something. Plus, we have two early childhood teachers that also work in the community, but also in that school to provide support. So a lot of times when there's a need for like the whole program, all hands are on deck to help out, to get. Because a lot of it, the first month for some of these students is super rough. You know, and it's not that everybody, you know, at the end of the year doesn't have, you know, areas to improve on, but that age in particular, kids grow significantly and make certain gains. So the philosophy is if we upfront give them more, then they might be better off later, you know.
Maybe without a PSA later.
But then also too, you know, we deal with a lot of students that, you know, if you look at their history, they just don't have a lot, you know, they don't have a chance. So, and then they come to us with these supports and we try to match that to get them to where they need to go, you know. And, you know, we're always trying to find ways to incorporate mental health support for kids. Rick and I were just talking yesterday on some other things we're trying to do with North Homes that won't be a cost to us, but are gonna ramp up. And I would share more now, but it's not official yet. But, but we're doing some things on that end to help get parents and kids access to med management, you know, talking over maybe some home dynamics, I think it's a support on. But what we find is our most needy students, like you can tell them, okay, go see your doctor, you know, do these things. They don't go, whether there's a barrier with transportation or they just are reserved about it and stuff, yeah.
To just add to what Director Lettska is saying is, all of our PSA decisions are driven by an IEP and a team. I mean, it's, if a need comes forward, it goes through a process or a student arrives with an IEP that has support built into the IEP that we have to cover. So, I mean, that's all driven by referrals and the team process, yeah.
And I appreciate that because I just, I believe if we can provide interventions and support early, that that may help a lot of young learners overcome some of the barriers and be able to perform.
And we'll have to make tough decisions about it, you know, because I do think. And, and we'll have to make tough decisions about it, you know, because I do think, you know, it's, there's, you need people to do the work, and so, you know, just have to figure out a way to do it with what we currently have budgeted, and figure out a way to maintain these positions without the funding that we had from the SR money, or, so.
Director Egan.
But that's not the whole intent of it, you know, the, the audit, but it is to kind of see a roadmap of maybe where we can be more efficient in our operation.
I have a question.
Yes.
Based on the numbers again, with the number of students that we have, need this service.
Yeah.
And what we're supplying, is there an average of how many students an actual PSA takes care of? I mean, we don't want to overburden one versus another.
Yeah.
Or is it based on severity, not severity, but the, the need for that student?
Yeah, so there are, there are kids that have one-to-one support, and we have a, we have a Google spreadsheet that kind of lays out where people are assigned. But yeah, we try to even those out, and sometimes we have to add more personnel to offset the needs of the kids, so. And just on a sidebar, we're talking about pairs and numbers, you know, there is, I have a report, and I think I brought it up before, but I think I confused everybody a little bit, but we are not necessarily a district with a high number of pairs versus like, you know, we're kind of in the middle, so the lower end. It'll, if you compare all school districts, three hundred and twenty-four, we're probably on the lower end of that list. So, but the districts that are really low, like Duluth, and they'll brag about that they don't have a lot of pairs, but they also have, you know, more social workers, more counselors, interventions, they, when you have all those other pieces, then yeah, you can reduce your sped costs, so.
So Director Egan, I thought PSAs were one-on-one.
No, not all of them are.
Well, I thought, well, I thought the majority were, no?
No, actually, there's been a huge, when I first started, we had twenty-five PSAs.
Yeah.
And a lot of those were one-to-ones for high-needs kids for medical.
Yeah.
Over the last fifteen years, we've had an uptick of kids that needs, you know, mental health needs have risen, kids' challenging behaviors have risen, and so then we've, we hired more pupil support assistants to address those. What, what we found at the elementary, we, we get more, we get more out of it when we assign pairs to some of these classrooms to work with multiple kids.
Okay.
Because these kids can learn from their peers, it's, you know, it sounds, you know, everybody knows that, but like kids respond better to their, their peers if it's positive. Now granted, there are times where it's not the appropriate spot for certain kids to be because of unsafe behavior, but if, if we can, you know, get kids that burst of service upfront, and they get to be around their peers, that's, that's what we want.
Okay, so is a typical PSA maybe in a classroom with overseeing three?
That's fair, yeah.
How about three?
Three or four, we don't have a.
Huh?
I know one that has.
The one, you know, one that has four?
In the lower end.
Lower, yeah, that's, it just depends, right, right, it depends. And then some days it's just with one, and other days it's with three, it just depends. Yeah, yeah, and sometimes they'll shift, they'll be like, okay, these kids are good, and then we'll be the other one, but, but yeah.
Director. Yeah, so the other, other thing I was gonna say is, you know what, I was really impressed and coolness for your work in hiring the new school psychologist.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm reading his bio, I just think that he's gonna be able to do really good things in our district and connect those kids in many different ways.
Yeah, I was impressed.
Yeah, we're really lucky that, I mean, I go back to, well, I, you know, I, I just think we have overall a really good district. We have really good teachers, we welcome new staff, that's why people come here, and that's, so, that's, yeah, it feels good to get reminded of that, so, because they're hard to find, I mean, you know, I, I just sent up, we're working on a special ed pipeline licensure with IAS, and we're trying to get more like paraprofessionals to consider going to teaching, because if you look down the line, we're, we're just gonna have, it's gonna be harder time to find just college graduates that are wanting to be special ed teachers, and in teaching in general. It's just a harder, you know, so.
Anything else from Mr. Lutz? Uh, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Is that it?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'll come back in a couple months.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Any other administrators, or anyone else? Okay. Sounds good. We'll go to committee reports, is there any? All right, none. And then now it's Alex's turn, Administrative Business, item eight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item A is a motion to approve the resolution to accept donations which entails fifty hundred dollar donation from the Kiwanis Club of Hibbing to support the purchase of Higgin High School choir room.
Oh, Lord.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, and thank you very much to the Kiwanis Club for that.
Item B is a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three payable, two thousand twenty-four imposed levy with maximum authority. Just a note here, there, there wasn't backup to this, and because I'm working with MBE, I'm updating some calculations on post-retirement health insurance issues, but they advised me to have it board approved with maximum authority, so that gives the board the full authority, and then we don't have to call a special meeting next week.
Okay. So.
Supported.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to ask and clarify, and this is, I'm gonna say, pretty routine in that we set it at the maximum authority, and then hopefully we'll be able to.
Go down, yeah.
Yeah, if we can, yeah, but this gives the board the opportunity to take advantage of the full
Right.
ability and capture the bell.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Item C is a motion to approve payment number one to Range Coroner's Roofing Company in the amount of one hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred forty dollars and sixteen cents for work completed on the Hibbing Schools re-roof project.
So moved.
Uh, supported by, by Director Gavardi, and by Director Blotman, any discussion?
Here we go again.
You know what, it just, it's endless.
I guess I'm not even, I don't want to, I was trying to like unshake.
It's so rough.
One sixteen, four ninety, is that what's the answer, is that the right answer?
I just, you know, it's based on previous roof claims that we had, it doesn't seem like they never end, it just goes.
Yeah, but you know what, I'm proud of our district, we keep up our buildings.
Well, yeah, I understand.
You know, we do, we don't let our district buildings run, get run down, so I'm proud of that, but it's, it's on the plate. It has to be.
Well, we have, because we're gonna end up competing with two new schools in our district that we have to compare ourselves to.
Yeah, so we have to, and we do, so I am proud of that very district.
So that was the retainage, Mike, is that, is the retainage, is that the, the balance due?
Yeah. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Item D is a motion to approve the purchase of services agreement between ISG seven oh one and FACS Education Solutions effective from September sixth, two thousand twenty-three to May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Lord.
It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion? This is not for FACS, as in F-A-C-S.
Correct.
This is, this is related to Title One, yeah. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Our discussion items, the only thing we have is we're going to move the October fourth meeting, check the ballot directors. October fourth, instead of October fourth, it'll be October second at three thirty, so it's a Monday, October second, three thirty. And can I have a motion to get that approved also? Moved by Director Poulter, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried for that. Any other discussion items by anyone?
Well, instructions is pretty much over now, it's gonna get Tyler in at some point here next month or so, it's gonna be a problem, you know, where things are happening, that's a big project, it's been a summer, absolutely, it's been over the stands.
Yeah, and of course with football now, Tyler had been talking about redoing the concession bathrooms, whatever at Cheever Field. Is that for next year, or when is that?
So that is, you know, I shared with you the, the bonding money that's coming for our district from Iron Range Resources, I think I shared with you. That's one of the projects that we submitted.
Okay.
Um, to be completed using those funds.
Okay.
So it hasn't been approved yet, but if approved, then yes, that would, in the spring.
Put us into the, the spring to start, get that going?
Yes.
Okay. And I know the locker room, they were supposed to receive lockers today, I think, or yesterday.
Okay.
And I don't know where that's at, but I think the epoxy flooring has been put in.
Yes.
In the locker room, so it's a slow process, you know, season has started, so what do you do?
Got to close the new scoreboard.
And then the new scoreboard is supposed to go on October first.
Yes.
Mrs. Eskley told me.
They were out there working on it last week, and we had another downpour, and then chased them, chased them out of there in the middle of that big.
What do you do with those scoreboards, that's all?
We're gonna put it up at the Lincoln, because we're still playing junior high games there, so we're.
It'll be perfect, yeah.
Yeah.
And then whoever's running that scoreboard at the Lincoln is gonna need maybe something better than a card table and chair to run it? I don't know, I mean, do we want to put some kind of little shelter? I don't know. I mean, it was just a thought in my mind, it's like, someone's gotta run that scoreboard.
Right, so you're not sitting in the rain, and you're not ready to just go.
There might be, there might be an option that we did at the Miracle League, that you can put in a portable remote that you don't have to have, tie it directly.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be nice.
Probably have to have there anyway. We just have remote control.
Little League has one where it's just battery powered.
So you mean, you could sit anywhere?
Sit your car everywhere.
Okay, I don't know, I thought it would be kind of nice to have a little shelter for refs and the scoreboard keeper and all that.
Well, and I don't know.
Like almost like a dugout.
A lot of those junior high games, the, the kids are running the scoreboard also, and the coaches are running the scoreboard in the junior high games, so it might just be coming right off the bench, or, but, but I'll.
I don't know, it's just a thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a thought. Oh, and then Mrs. Eskley said the new scoreboard is gonna take like four to run.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a process.
It's a big deal.
Yeah.
So my husband always does the score at the games, so, you know, he'll be able to still do that, and then whoever does the time, but then the, the replays and everything else. But Mrs. Eskley said she's got a lot of students interested in learning how to do it, so I don't know if we're gonna do it with student volunteers, or.
Awesome.
Because, yeah.
That was, that was my whole concern, and you know, he struggles now to get game workers, and now we're.
Right, it's like, oh my God, what, what are they gonna do? But hopefully the, the students will step up, it could be part of a tech class or something, I would think.
Sure.
To get some experience or.
Sure.
And the Hibbing Public Access Television Room also has the student showroom, that's gonna start up again.
Oh, good, nice.
I can speak to that if you want, I know a lot of.
Awesome, thank you, Mr. Merkle.
I don't mean to jump in, but I'm one of the people that's gonna be trained to work the scoreboard, and it is a minimum of three, it's just up to five, depending on what you're doing. I have spoken with our teacher on, oh man, what does Miss Zubich teach, what's the name of the class? Help me out here, uh, digital communication, and there is a curriculum that goes with it, she's not ready to dive into it and teach that curriculum without learning it herself first. Uh, but we do have, I, we're hopefully gonna have some kids from that class come in and learn to, to run the scoreboard as well. Uh, it's a serious training session to get people up and running, to get this board to do all the things that it can do. Uh, but we're hoping to have live action replay, we do have a couple of advertisements that are gonna be run during the game, so it helps generate some revenue. Uh, we should also have it during track, and we should also have it during softball available to run. But like you said, it is three people, a, a minimum of three to run the scoreboard properly. But there is training going on, there is a class that's gonna be involved with it a little bit, and we're also looking at not just the digital communication classes, but some others as well, so.
So is the digital communication class, uh, an elective?
Yes.
And who usually takes it, like juniors and seniors, or?
Uh, yeah, it tends to be upperclassmen.
And is it run every year?
Um, I believe so.
They usually fill it up?
Yep, and like I said, the scoreboard comes with its own curriculum, but the, the instructor for the class hasn't seen the curriculum yet, so she's not ready to implement it into a classroom and teach it yet.
So for this first year or so, we'll have students that are interested, volunteer, whatever.
We'll, we'll bring them in and start teaching them, yes, uh, but.
Is digital communications the whole year, or is it half, just once?
I believe it's a full year.
It's a full year class? Oh, that's awesome, because then they could do the track and football.
They, they can, um, it's just a matter of, it's gonna take some time for the teacher to be ready to teach.
Absolutely, yeah, I understand that, yeah.
Uh, but there are other opportunities for the kids to, to get some experience on the, on the board, for sure.
That's awesome.
But in, in doing that, I mean, like, I would think we maybe can use it, kind of phase it in, you know, so you can use the score and the timer, and then as people become proficient in the other pieces of it.
We will be ready to go as soon as they give us the green light, full speed. Uh, we have, we have a group of, I think, six adults right now that are gonna go through the training, and we'll be ready to go. I know I'll be ready to go, but we'll have a couple others as well.
To be true, how long is the training?
I've gotten a lot of emails already, and I've done a lot of the reading, um, and then there's going to be a professional working with us to set up for the first game. So it's, in order to run a Friday night game, it takes several hours of prep time when it comes to, uh, setting up all your advertisements, knowing when you're gonna run advertisements, how often you're running advertisements, uh, and then on top of that, you got one person who's just running the score and the timer, one person who's running the advertisements, one person who's running instant replay. So there, there's a lot going on.
So can I ask a dumb question? How much, how much longer are our games gonna run now? I mean, we might get done at midnight, right, after we're done with all the instant replays, and I mean, really?
No, it, um, it will not slow down the game whatsoever, the only time you can run an instant replay is on, uh, the first down where there are moving chains and it takes a few seconds. Instant replays and advertisements are ten to fifteen seconds, that's it.
Okay, so it's not gonna like the game?
No, and replay, or ins, instant replay on first downs, but then advertisements would be during timeouts mostly, timeouts and quarter breaks, things like that.
I'm just thinking, otherwise we won't get referees.
I've, I've done a lot of reading on this, and I think it's gonna be a great, great program, great for the kids, and the fact that we can have, for example, if digital communication kids don't necessarily want to be in the booth, I could use a couple of kids running our huddle system, um, down on the field, like especially for like track and field, because a lot of the jumping stuff is on the far side of the field, you could do instant replay on the board of that, so people in the stands can see their, their kids on the far side of the field.
That's gonna be nice.
Yeah, but we'll need students over there with school iPads, recording it, sending it to me in order to run the replay, so I've looked into this quite a bit.
So three people to run it?
A minimum of three.
One does ads, one does replay.
And one is running the timer slash score.
Timer slash score?
Well, it's, it's two buttons. The, the timer.
That's all it is.
Well, the timer and the score isn't too terribly bad, I mean, you turn the timer on and off, similar to what we do now, and then when somebody scores, you change the score, that's not too terribly bad.
You have to put player numbers and?
Again, that's run by one individual who's probably doing the instant replay and things of that nature, and all of the.
So it's gonna really change things.
Well, you can do player profiles, if somebody makes a tackle, we can put their profile up while they're getting set up for the next play, and do a bio of, of that player or something like that, it's, it's actually a really neat system, so.
It, it sounds awesome.
Just so Paul knows, this is all paid for by private donations and sponsors.
Yeah, thank you for pointing out all that, yeah, the school district didn't have to finance this, so it's fabulous. Yes, okay, anything else for discussion? All right, Mr. Poulter.
Motion to adjourn.
I guess we're adjourned, knock, knock.